I'd like to call over to the regular city council meeting with a roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Councilmembers Ratty, Lawson, Smith, Carrigan, Schmidt, City Manager Carey, City Attorney Adams, McCorm.
If you don't stand for Pastor Phil Vanna from the Summit Christian Church, please, for the invocation. Is the pastor here? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Please bow your heads. Father, I thank you for this wonderful day. I thank you so much for this meeting, for the men and women who are the big servants of this city to come and just to make decisions. I thank you for their position. I thank you that you placed them there, and I pray you give them wisdom today as they're making some important decisions. I pray that they would be able to hear clearly and understand what's being proposed and discussed, and I pray that they would make wise decisions that are gonna be the best for this community. And pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I appreciate that. Mr. Lawson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. If you want to speak under comments from the public, please fill out a card. Now, I have one here from Mike Trussell. Mike, do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait till the agenda item? It's up to you. Wait? Okay. I'll get you on there. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, next is the approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Pull any items. Mr. Carey?
Mr. Mayor, could we pull item 5.1?
Okay. Okay, I don't have control over the screen, so just jump in when you want to make a motion, and then we will use the machine to vote with, and they'll display it in the back room, so... Okay, any comments?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 5... or, excuse me, approve the agenda as outlined, minus, like, pull item 5.1.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Next is recommendation to approve minutes of the regular meeting of February 28th and the city council workshop of March 7th. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion.
Mr. Tippers.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 28th and the city council workshop of March 7th, 2011. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next are announcements and presentations. First of all, we have a proclamation for Peace Corps Month. Is there someone here to accept this? Okay, come on down, right here in front. And just have a seat right there. I'll read the proclamation, and I'll let you say a few words, okay? And you are? Please give your name for the record.
Nancy Kellys.
Thanks, Nancy, for being here. Whereas the Peace Corps has been an enduring symbol of our nation's commitment to encourage progress, create a... to encourage progress, create of opportunity, advance cultural knowledge and awareness, and expand development at a grassroots level throughout the developing world. And whereas more than 200,000 Americans have served as Peace Corps volunteers in 139 countries since 1961. And whereas over the past 50 years, more than 900 men and women from Nevada have responded to our nation's call and served in the Peace Corps. And whereas the Peace Corps volunteers have made significant and lasting contributions around the world in agriculture, business development, information technology, education, health, and HIV/AIDS, and the environment, and have improved the lives of individuals and communities around the world. And whereas Peace Corps volunteers have strengthened the ties of friendship and understanding between the United States and global community. And whereas Peace Corps volunteers, enriched by their experiences overseas, have brought their communities throughout the United States a deeper understanding of other cultures and traditions, thereby bringing a domestic dividend to our nation. And whereas it is indeed fitting to recognize the achievements of Peace Corps and honor its volunteers, past and present, and reaffirm our country's commitment to helping people help themselves throughout the world. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 2011 Peace Corps Month.
On March 1st, 1961, President Kennedy enacted the Peace Corps. And on March 1st of this year, at my home, we had 35 Northern Nevada returned Peace Corps volunteers get together to reminisce and to share memories and stories. Those 35-plus volunteers represented 18 different countries from 1961 to 2008. And I had the privilege of being the first woman from the state of Nevada to join the Peace Corps back in 1961, so I'm a relic. Our group decided that we're going to stick together and look for projects that we can take on and work toward bettering the communities in our Northern Nevada area. So you haven't heard the last of us, and if there are other Peace Corps volunteers out there that have not responded yet, I'd be very happy to hear from them, and thank you. On behalf of those 30-plus people who were at my home on the 1st of March, and all of the rest of the Peace Corps volunteers who are out there, thank you very much for honoring the Peace Corps today. Thank you so much.
One second, one second, one second. You know, I thank you so much. It must have taken a lot of courage. In 1961, you were, what, 10 years old?
Yes. Actually, I was 12.
Okay. Anyway, no matter how old you were, it must have taken a lot of courage just to pick up and go somewhere that you didn't know anything about, or something like that to volunteer. It's just wonderful on your part, and everyone appreciates it. Do we have some comments? Julia?
Well, what folks may not know is that Nancy came back to this area and had a stellar career with Washoe County Library System, ending as the Director of Libraries just a couple of years ago. And I know, in my work with her, in my former life, working with kids and gangs, she always had that ethic of how do we get the library system out into the community, and I'm sure that some of that came from that original experience. But those volunteers come back, and they make their community a better place for the bulk of their career, and so just wanted to point that out about Nancy, what a great job she did with the libraries. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Was that your picture in the paper today?
Yes, that was one of my students.
That was your picture?
Yes.
Because you haven't changed a bit?
Thank you. I'm gonna remember that.
Thank you for your service, absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Nancy. Appreciate it. Okay, next we have a proclamation for Women's History Month and International Women's Day. I wonder who would do this for us, please. Ms. Ratty?
Whereas countless women have steered the course of our history, and their stories are ones of steadfast determination. From reaching for the ballot box to breaking barriers on athletic fields and battlefields, American women have stood resolute in the face of adversity and overcome obstacles to realize their full measure of success. And whereas March 8th, 2011, marks the 100th anniversary of International Women's Day and is celebrated in over 170 countries worldwide. And whereas Women's History Month is an opportunity to recognize the contributions women have made to our nation and to honor those who blaze trails for women's empowerment and equality. And whereas our shared history unites families, communities, and nations, and although women's history is intertwined with the history shared with men, social, religious, economic, and biological factors have created a unique sphere of women's history. And whereas the Nevada Women's History Project provides visibility and support for gathering and disseminating history about the roles and contributions of Nevada women of every race, class, and ethnic background. And whereas women's stories provide essential role models for everyone that are genuinely needed to face the extraordinary changes and unrelenting challenges of the 21st century, and learning our history is essential to our strength as a nation, a state, and a community. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 2011 Women's History Month and March 8th, 2011 International Women's Day, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor the history, accomplishment, and contributions of Nevada women, American women, and women around the world.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and council members, for the honor of proclaiming Women's History Month and International Women's Day. Although today's the 28th of March, and March is just about gone, Sparks actually started us with our Women's History Month celebrations this year and continued throughout the month. I made a presentation to the Reno Sparks Kiwanis Group before March began about Women's History Month, and during the meeting, it turned out that Spanish Springs High School Jazz Band is their key club group here in Sparks, and the Spanish Springs High School Jazz Band were the entertainers at International Women's Day's fundraising dinner this year. So Sparks had a wonderful role to play, and it turned out that the Kiwanis donated scholarship money to the Spanish Springs High School Jazz Band through all the work and talking that we did during Women's History Month, so it helped benefit the community in interesting ways that we had no idea that we would be getting into. You have many community groups that work here in Sparks to make this city a great, great place. The Zonta Club meets at DeAndrea every month. They did a special program for Women's History Month this year as well, and even though we're at the end of the month today proclaiming Women's History Month in Sparks, you were the beginning, and you were almost the end of the month for us all. We raised a little over $5,000 for women's scholarships at UNR, TMCC, and WNC at our International Women's Day event, and there are even more funds coming in today. On Friday, your own City Councilwoman Julia Ratty was one of our featured speakers at a rally that was held at the Other City Council Hall. I got a nice joke, Kathy.
It was over there in West Sparks?
It was over there in West Sparks, yes. And it was taped by the city folks so that it could go on the cable channel, and I just talked to Adam, who's your public information person, about getting a CD and giving it to the Sparks channel so it could be played. And it was a wonderful hour of inspiration from women leaders around the Northern Nevada area, as well as some Chautauqua players, TMCC's performing arts students that do all the musical comedy events, just great music and just wonderful information. We had a great time, and hopefully folks in Sparks will get to see it on your channel as well as the Other Cities channel throughout the month. And we were raising funds again for women's programs throughout Washoe County. So we thank you so much for making Women's History Month a special day here in Sparks, and appreciate the time and energy that it took to do that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any comments? Julia?
Donna does all of this as a volunteer, and she organized a huge fundraising dinner with hundreds of people. She put on this women's rally, and I know there are committee members, but really she is a force to be reckoned with, and so I thank you for your volunteer efforts in the community and making sure that these important events get recognized. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your volunteerism.
Thank you.
Okay, next, in keeping with Women's History Month and International Women's Day, we have a commendation for Jesse Eiding. Jesse, you want to come up in front? Now Jesse's the daughter of one of our attorneys here, Cheryl Eiding, and she's been a great performer in the skiing at our local high school, Reed High School, so some of the accomplishments that she's had through her career were great, and I just wanted to commend her and do a special little presentation to her, so I'll go ahead and read the commendation. Whereas Jesse Eiding is a senior at Reed High School and will graduate in June 2010 with a 4.0 grade point average. You must have taken after your mother then, or...
Something like that, yeah.
Whereas in her freshman year, Jesse was the Giant Slalom State Champion, and whereas in her sophomore year, Jesse was the Slalom State Champion and the Combined State Champion. And whereas as a junior, Jesse was a Combined State Champion, and whereas as a senior, Jesse was the Slalom State Champion, the Giant Slalom State Champion, and the Combined State Champion. And whereas during her four years at Reed High School, Jesse earned seven Nevada Interscholastic Activity Association State Championships in skiing, and now holds the most overall state championship in the Women's NIAA Skiing Record Book. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council in commending Jesse Eiding on her scholastic aptitude and her many achievements on the ski slopes. Congratulations on your many successes, and the best wishes for a bright and happy future.
I just wanted to thank my parents mostly. They've been here for four years. They've been supporting me the whole way, and it's been an amazing high school career, and without them, I don't know if I'd been able to make it. And to my grandparents, who are also here, they've been to every single soccer game, every single ski race. It's... they've always been there for me. And then my, like, surrogate dad, Bill Jakeways, he's also here in the audience. He's always been there for me. He's been rooting for me the whole way, and without all of them, I don't know what I'd be or where I'd be today. So thank you, and thank you, council, for this recognition.
You want to find out your parents and grandparents and...
Right there, and then back there, in both ways, please.
Okay, comments? Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, well, congratulations. My daughter skied for Reed, and the best she ever did was third place in the state, which was great. I thought that was fantastic, but when you hold that many records, congratulations. My only question is, what lucky college is gonna get you for the ski team? How many offers have you had?
Actually, I'm going to Westminster College in Salt Lake for soccer.
Oh, for soccer?
Yeah. I'm signing with them this week, and then I plan to ski for the Park City Ski Team this coming winter.
Good for you. It's a great place. My daughter went, after reading, went to the University of Utah, so she was a skier and loved it there, so have fun.
Thank you so much.
Yes? Okay, next we have a presentation regarding bi-local initiative. Mr. Dave Asher is gonna give us a quick presentation. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and esteemed leaders of this great city. I'm a third-generation Reno Sparks. Went to Duluth, right next door here. Went to Green Bay Elementary School, and then went on to Huggs, so I'm very local. About a year and a half ago, we got the idea to form a little steering committee and start a bi-local initiative. Let me get this...
Did you open the bottom one?
There we go. Thank you. And everybody has a brochure. There you go. Thank you. Well, the steering committee came up with some friends of mine that were participating in bi-local campaign. They had a little brochure, a little printed bi-local listing that they put out, and it kind of failed. So we decided to go out on the internet, and one of the ideas that came out of that was supporting local first is the way to go, but also supporting the local franchises and chain stores needs to be recognized. The enemy to our economy is shopping online out of state. No jobs, no taxes. So I'm not alienating locally-owned, excuse me, local chain stores and franchises. I just say choose local first, go to the local chain stores and franchises if you can't find what you're looking for, and the enemy is shopping online out of state. So I get that clear right in the beginning. I tend to make people that work for franchises and chain stores uncomfortable. I do support them also. In a lot of the presentations I've been asked to give lately, I share with the people the four business models, ways we choose to spend money. Typically, there's a mom and pop, then there's a franchise and a chain store, and online shopping. I explain why bi-local is the best for our economy, how it gathers taxes, and how it creates jobs. Buying local, locally-owned business typically supports 10 to 15 other local businesses in their sourcing for services and supplies. A chain store and a franchise has all their supplies coming on a truck, and then obviously shopping online doesn't have anything coming to the area except the purchase. And then you take a look at the profit margin. The profits are returned back to the community in the form of profits from the local business owner. Typically, the franchise relatives and the chain store profits leave the area, and again, shopping online out of state is the enemy to our economy. No jobs, no taxes. So what I did in this initial steering committee is to seed our directory. I came up with this wonderful idea. Who should be in the directory? I'm the first one in the country to start a bi-local campaign, offering every locally-owned independent business a free listing. So when you go to bilocalrenosparks.com and you click my directory, you'll see that it's just a typical Google-type search engine. Nobody paid to be in Google. They didn't call and say, "I need 25 bucks to be in Google." Everybody was in it for free. I'm the first bi-local initiative in the country to offer free listing for everybody. All the other bi-local campaigns are only supporting paid members. So they're ignoring 30, 40, 50, 60 percent of their community just because they didn't buy a membership. I have almost 2,860, I think, businesses listed here. I've been working on seeding this for over a year now. So my idea is to have you go to bilocalrenosparks.com, use this search engine to make a purchase supporting locally-owned businesses. You can't find a business in here that's not locally-owned. I have one category under the local that is... I do put the local franchises right here, local-owned franchises, and local home-based businesses. I acknowledge them. I have 20 locally-owned franchises there. The rest of these are all locally-owned independent businesses. So going back to my initial website here, my business model, "bi-local equals jobs," which is listed on the back of the brochure, create a free online directory, offering a free listing for every locally-owned business. I'm just so excited that I'm the first one to come up with that idea. After that, advertise and market this directory to the public to have them identify a locally-owned business. That's what I've been doing for about a year. The press has been very good to me. I've been on the cover of Reno News &amp; Review. I've been in RDJ, the Sparks Daily Tribune has done a wonderful job. The press has been just all over this. It's great. Then I educate consumers on choosing locally first by explaining the business model. The next thing is the 10% shift, the 10% shift in 2011 campaign. This is a national movement, so you go over here and click this 10% shift, and what this is, is a study done by Civic Economics and a extensive study done in Grand Rapids, Michigan. What they found is after a successful 10% shift, buying local as much as you can, shifting 10% of your GDP from non-local to locally-owned businesses, created $193 million staying in their community. That's money that was already gonna be spent, they just went to the local coffee shop, they went to the local grocery store, they went to the local restaurant, they used the local contractors, and created that shift. So I adjusted this study, it was a very extensive study. They interviewed all the businesses and found where the money came from. So I adjusted it to our population, I adjusted it to our average income, and I adjusted it to our GDP. So what all this reflects is if we created a 10% shift in Reno Sparks, we would have $367 million annually staying in our community. I rounded it down to $350 million. I'm calling this a $350 million bi-local initiative. What that means to create a 10% shift is we need to adjust our spending habits as much as possible to create that shift. It's not just doing it here and there. It's everywhere, in all the city procurement, all the county procurement, all the state procurement, the school district procurement, and every one of us that hears my voice needs to start going to locally-owned independent businesses. That will create this $350 million staying and working in our community, creating jobs and providing tax base as part of the school system. Isn't that exciting? Literally launching a $350 million campaign, no new taxes, no new revenue. I start naming names. I say go to Bebo's, not Starbucks. I say go to El Dorado, not Harrah's. I say take your car to Blaze Garage, not Sears. I'm naming names. Those are locally-owned independent businesses. So that's how I started this whole program. I launched the 10% shift. Last year, I got a lot of press on Keep Your Money Home for the Holidays campaign, shop locally for Christmas, leading into the 10% shift in 2011. Now, I'm very excited about this brand. See this beautiful building over on Vassar and Codan in that city that's to the left of Sparks, as I heard earlier? This is a new center, so I just went from a website, from a guy at home with a website, to this amazing, beautiful building that's been reconstructed. Been in the area forever, but it's totally reconstructed. AMH Properties worked with me on this. They rebuilt the building. It's beautiful inside and out. So now what I have is down here in the bottom, was a picture in my classroom. It's this picture right here. I have a classroom now that seats 100 people. I have boardrooms, and I've taken this room to 1,000 square foot, and I'm creating an entrepreneur, small business startup support system. It's a co-working environment. You can come in and rent for as little as $50 a month if you're a brand-new nonprofit. If you're a home-based business that needs to get out of the home, come down, use my Wi-Fi, I'm providing computers, local Wi-Fi, local roasted coffee, local furniture in a locally-owned building. So come down and get support. I'm providing mentors for startup businesses to help get them up and running. We have classes in these beautiful classrooms and boardrooms to support them. So now I'm offering this to the community. If you're a brick-and-mortar that needs to downsize, this is a great place to have an office. I've taken these walls and I've put a dozen desks around there. We have nice furniture coming. I'm asking for donations. One of the local nonprofits has donated about a dozen computers. They're coming the first of the month, so I'm gonna be like the library, offering computers, Wi-Fi, resources, and mentoring for startup businesses to help them create jobs, get going, and get them off of unemployment, and create income, and enhance our tax base. So this is a local business co-op, is what I'm calling it. It's like a chamber of commerce, only it's for locally-owned only. I'm a member of both the Reno Sparks Chamber and Northern Nevada Chamber. I love them. They're great places to go. I love networking with those people. I've been pushing the bi-local campaign at their networking events for about a year now, but this is locally-owned only, and what this is to produce is all B-to-B. Not only am I asking consumers to start supporting locally-owned businesses, I'm saying when I get this group of businesses together and we build throughout this year, we build this campaign of B-to-B, I'm saying if you're a local business owner, you damn well better be spending your money at another local business. You can't buy your business cards at 1,800 business cards anymore. Yeah, you save $10, but the guy next door that owns the business that owns the print shop, his kids go to the same school. He's paying property taxes, he'll spell our libraries, our roads, our police, our fire. So by creating this B-to-B environment where we support only locally-owned businesses, it's gonna create more of this revenue and help create this 10% shift, 10% 2010. Finally, I built this local business co-op. Strategy number six is I've united business leaders, and I'm working with a lot of people. This new entrepreneur initiative has got a lot of steam. I'm right in the middle of a lot of campaigns at the UNR. I've spoken to the Business Winner Loan Class on entrepreneurship. They're creating entrepreneurial curriculums now to add to the business classes, so it's just catching a lot of steam, and everybody's on board with this. And lastly, as you'll see at the bottom of the brochure on the front page, is Bali, Business Alliance of Local Living Economies, is a national economic development system. I own this territory with this, it's about 100 cities, and they're creating some of the latest technologies to help turn economies around. So I've been introducing these... I spoke just a few weeks ago at the county commissioners' meeting. I have things like leaky calculators. I have a 21-page report on where the money comes and goes in this state, and in this city, and in this county. I can narrow it down to Sparks, or Reno, or Washoe County. We eat 11 million chickens a year in Washoe County. You want to create some jobs? Grow 11 million chickens and keep the money here. We eat 100,000 head of cattle. Have a 21-page report of where the money leaks out of our economy. You plug those leaks and create jobs. So that's exciting, too. I've been sitting on webinars and conference calls and learning about this for the last year, and now I'm part of economic development, job recovery. It's just started off as this little website thing, and now look where I'm at. I have this co-op, I have this co-working office, and now I have this national initiative bringing economic development tools to you so that you can help turn our economy around and create jobs. So that's pretty much it. Again, the press has been good to me. Just a couple of weeks ago, RDJ had me in there. Asher opens doors to the co-op. Northern Nevada Business Weekly got the scoop on it. Sparks Chamber, favorite Joshua right here, reporting on choosing favorites over the holidays. Cover of Reno News &amp; Review. Back there, again, support local businesses for your holiday shopping. And then, again, the Sparks Daily Tribune, Bi-Local Movement gains steam. So I've done well in the press. I've done well with social media. I've done well with this website. All of this has been out-of-pocket, and these are very affordable marketing tools, and I've just mastered all of them. It's just very exciting. I appreciate the time that you've given me to tell you this. Please take a look at the difference in your spending. There's a difference between local and locally-owned. Support locally-first. As I was at the county commission meeting earlier this month... As I was at the county commission meeting earlier this month, they had an economist there ahead of me that had just done a great survey, a study of where the counties spent their money, and they were real proud they spent 78% of their money locally. Well, I got my phone out and calculated, well, first of all, the other 22% added up to $571 million that leaked out of our economy. Now, I don't know, maybe they had to do that. Maybe there was no choice if they could keep that money local. But out of that other 78%, which was a very large number, I asked them to explain the difference between local and locally owned, and they didn't know. There's a difference about where the profits go, and there's a difference about where the procurement came from for those businesses. If it's not locally owned, their supplies came in from out of state and the profits left the state. So please pay attention to that, and let's help turn our economy around and create jobs.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions? One thing I need to say, you know, thanks for doing this, Dave. It's a great initiative and all that, but, you know, I wish you'd be a little more excited about it. You're not very engaged in this process.
Have I got the funnest job in town?
So far, you do.
$350 million initiative. I really think we can hit it. Thank you. I really am going to be responsible for some, creating some jobs. As you affect our community here, each one of you, I'm just a guy at home, and I appreciate this area. I love it, and it's just, I found a way to be passionate about something and make a living out at the same time.
Questions for Mr. Asher. Go ahead, Ed.
I've been privileged to hear Dave speak a couple of times in the last few weeks as our paths are crossing on the same kind of economic development, and this is a wonderful initiative. I'm glad to see that we're getting more momentum. And I think you, along with some of the other people that I've talked to in recent weeks, we're going to turn this thing around.
I believe it, yes.
I appreciate your enthusiasm also.
Thank you. On a final note, you're all invited. There's an invitation in your flyer. This is an insert in a trifold. I might be the first firm that's ever done that. The grand opening and ribbon cutting is next Wednesday at 5:00. 5:00 to 7:00. There'll be local food, and come join me there for the ribbon cutting. Please, if you can work it into your calendar. It's going to be very well attended. Come and join me at this beautiful building.
Great, Dave. Thanks for taking this on, and thanks for getting this out to the public and letting them know what a big difference buying locally can mean to our community.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Get off the internet and buy something local, right?
Yes.
All right. Thanks. Okay, let's move on to consent items. We're going to pull 5.1 for discussion, and then anyone want to pull any other items? If not looking for a motion on 5.1, 5.2 through 5.7, jump in.
Move to approve consent items 5.1, or 5.2 through 5.7.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve 5.2 through 5.7. Any further discussion? Sign them, please, vote. Passage unanimously. 5.1, Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you. I just wanted to report to the council on the claims and bills. There were two payments that went to attorneys that are working on a legal matter for the city of Sparks. I'm in the process of working with the city attorney to look at both of those items, and would let you know that those will be returned to you for further discussion at a later date. The checks were cut and paid, and this, of course, is just a report of monthly activities. And I'm certainly looking into those, and we'll bring those back to you as the council.
Do we need a reaction on 5.1, Sean?
Okay.
You please accept it as you usually do for claims and bills, and know that those two items will be returned to you.
Okay. Move to approve, please. I move to approve a consent on 5.1 without those two items in there. The check for $24,000?
You can go ahead and accept.
The entire report is, this is just a report of the claims that we have made.
Okay, move to approve the report 5.1. Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty. Questions, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way that I understand this agenda item works is that this is the formal approval from the council for these items that have been paid. Is that correct?
This is the notification required by the charter of the bills that have been paid, and it is before you as a matter of reporting that these, and we ask you to approve this report each month. You're not actually, we're not actually holding all the checks until this date, and that is per the charter.
I understand these have already been paid, but my understanding of it is that this is the council approval, and the council has to approve all expenditures that the city makes in the form of this report. I would love some report every other week of what has been paid. This is our formal approval of what's been paid. Is that correct or not?
Typically, that's what the city council does. Now, as far as the specifics of the charter, I couldn't tell you that.
I believe that this is not a charter item. This is an NRS item that requires the governing body to give formal approval of all expenditures from their government body, and that's done in a report for this example.
I don't have any reason to disagree with you, sir.
And I believe that you, to be prudent, for these two checks to be held out of the formal approval, we can accept all the other checks that are there. But if we're going to formally approve something that we may have issues with, I believe at this point, if we give that approval, then there's no recourse. You can't give an approval and turn around and say, "No, I don't give my approval for those expenditures."
These checks have already been issued?
Yes, sir.
That is correct. So if we don't approve them now, what do we do then? That's what I'm not getting.
And that's kind of what, when I'm speaking. We can certainly look at the issues that surround these two and report back to you, but as they both involve a legal case, I believe the action I'm asking you to take to approve them is correct, and then reporting back on whether or not there's an anomaly.
Mr. Carrigan, I was under the understanding that this money came from the court's finances, not from ours.
It does come from fees that are paid in the form of an assessment to the municipal court, and this is permitted for them to collect these fees and use them.
Any other questions? There is a motion on the floor. Mr. Kerrigan.
Yeah, I just want to put this on the record. You know, the municipal court has a right to go out and find the attorney they want to find. I have a hard time spending taxpayer money on Holland and Hart because if anybody forgets, they're the ones that sued the city. Is that right, Chet? Weren't they the ones that were on the opposite ends of our three or four lawsuits?
They haven't been strangers to litigation against.
Okay, and even though it's not unethical, I just have a hard time with that law firm representing part of the city.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, we're trying to motion to, we can get it straightened out. I don't know what we're, I really don't know what we're doing here. Okay. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern with this item, these two, is, and it appears that maybe there's been conversation, and I'm not aware of, that has the proper procedures been done for this authorization? There seems to be a whole myriad of questions. If the original PO was written for $24,999, and yet we're at $40-some thousand on that PO. That right there requires a council approval for that money to be spent. It doesn't matter. It's not a department issue. It's a procedural issue with accounting. As with as many press reports as we see out there right now, newspaper articles of departments overspending, embezzlement, all that types of things, I think it's important for policymakers to look at the procedures that we're doing and make sure procedures are followed when it comes to terms of money. And that's where my question, and I don't have those answers yet, that that's the case.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
And I am also trying to bring the answers to the process questions and bring transparency to the issue. This is in order of a report we do monthly on claims and bills, and I needed more opportunity to look into the processes and prepare an agenda item for your discussion of this matter. That's what I was asking for today.
So these are coming back as an agenda item, Sean?
Yes, sir. That was my request.
Already been paid?
Yes, so the checks have been cut.
Then I'll make that motion to do what the city manager just elaborated on.
Do we have a second?
Second.
For discussion. Motion by Kerrigan, seconded by Ratty, for discussion. Mr. Schmidt.
It was my understanding, Judge, that there was $24,999 for a retainer?
May I speak?
I'm asking you.
It's Judge. It is already on, please. Now it's on?
Now it's on.
We were originally informed that anything over $25,000 we had to bring to the city council, which wasn't true. And the money that was used to retain council to exercise our constitutional rights after Mr. Adams told us he had a conflict and that we needed to hire our own attorney, has been taken out of the MCAA Restricted Special Revenue Fund over which this body, with all due respect, has no authority.
Okay, but my question was, was the retainer $24,999? What was the retainer?
Twenty-four even.
And had the federal funds expended? So that's the total that was spent?
As far as, as far as what we have, let me, that's it. That's what we have.
Now, Mr. Schmidt, you mentioned something about $42,000?
That's the report that I got. There was over $40,000 already spent on this account.
Come on down, Heidi. Make it easier on yourself.
I think this is actually proving my point here, is the amount of confusion around this item.
No, he, I apologize. The retainer was 24, and that's after we realized that we were headed to court and that the issues were not going to be resolved. That's when the retainer was made. Before that, Heidi's got the full amount. Heidi? Okay. And I believe Mr. Lawson informed me last week he had looked into it, and Mr. Lawson, I think you have the amount that had been paid to date.
Yeah, to the Holland and Hart as a vendor, that doesn't mean that there's 42, one check for 42,000. There are multiple checks that added up to that amount, 42 and some change.
And that was up to the point when we realized that this was headed for court, and then we made the retainer. And how much was it that's been paid to the city's law firm? Does anybody know?
That I don't, I figure I do.
Yeah, no, I can answer that. So I find.
Go ahead, Chet.
Go ahead.
I've got a check here on 11/32 for $3,759. I've got a check on 10/18 for $3,217. Got a check on 11/24 for $2,011. Got a check on 12/27 for $7,553. And then a check on January 24, 2011 for $5,227. And then a check on, let's see, February 28, 2011 for $864. And then a check on February 23, 2011 for $24,000 even.
So my question is, are all those checks written for $1,000, are they for the same reason, for this case that you're talking about?
As far as I know, I don't think.
So you're, you're, you're making $24,000. The PO is.
But, gentlemen, can I say this, too? This is where the misunderstanding comes from. Our AA fees, the MCAA Restricted Special Revenue Fund, we have never come in front of this body for approval of any check that's been issued out of there, and we do it all the time. For some reason, pardon me.
Then why is it on here?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Kerrigan. Why is it on here is a good question. It's never been on here. We pay our security bills. We pay everything out of this fund. Never has it appeared on this agenda or has it appeared for approval by this body because, like again, I say, with all due respect, you have no authority to either deny or grant us use of those funds. I would have had this conversation, Mr. Kerrigan, Mr. Lawson, we've had good conversations about this, and just, Mr. Kerrigan knows, and I appreciate his statement on the record about Holland and Hart, I think we both were blindsided by that when Mr. Adams told us that there was a conflict and we needed to sit council, hearing from the beginning Holland and Hart because he objected to our first council that we had, which was Little Mendelson. And nowhere up until the charter, the city charter committee meeting, was Mr. Kerrigan, I believe, or the day or two before, or myself, aware that Holland and Hart had represented in the manner that Mr. Kerrigan did. So there was absolutely no animosity, or obviously, we were trying to resolve these matters, not create more discourse.
So then why can't we approve the claims and bills without the payment to Holland and Hart?
We can't. That's what, but I understand.
Why can't we do that, Sean?
I believe the checks are issued by the finance director and for all accounts in the city of Sparks, and we bring all payments on these, every account and every check passes through this claims and bills report system. There isn't any other check that's issued bearing the name of the city of Sparks that doesn't fall within this report. There was some questions regarding whether this particular purchase had followed proper procedures, and my request tonight was simply to have an opportunity to look into those questions and report back. But all checks are issued under the finance department, and all checks come from the finance director's signature on them, and they are reported in this process every single month for as long as we've been a modern city.
So it's a pleasure of the council, Ms. Ray.
I'd like to make a statement, too.
Well, and they're always done after the fact. I mean, it's always, it's the period that end of the ninth. In this particular report, it's a list of every check that was cut, and it's standard to accept them, and then if they're over $25,000 and it's an account that we have authority, then it's a separate item on the consent agenda. Correct?
There are other procedures that are in place to detect those before we exceed $25,000, and those were pretty much detected this time. There's just some differences in the procedures. It gets into the funding and the special nature of this fund that the judge is speaking to, and those are some questions I'd like an opportunity to vet and put before you. I do not, and did not mean to imply that something's improper here. I'm simply asking for more time to evaluate the procedures and provide you the path and give you the opportunity to do your duty as the legislative body, the city council.
Well, I believe we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the report as submitted. I am absolutely comfortable in reaching out in good faith and saying, "Let's move forward on this." Both sides should have the opportunity to move in the way that they need to. Let's get the questions answered if we're following the right procedure, which I believe and respect the city manager, that he will bring back, and let's move on.
Can we have other comments? Mr. Lawson, then, Mr. Schmidt.
And I want to just echo that, too. I don't believe anything shady going on here. I just want to know how it gets to where it gets to, and I think that you guys are perfectly within your rights to do what you're doing, and I have no issues with that. But I want to, the question can't be answered at this particular moment. So I just want to know, so that we don't end up with a situation like some of our neighbors around the valley where we've done something incorrect or the city council wasn't aware. And I don't think that, I'm not saying that that's happening. I'm just saying that it's just, everybody's heightened sensitivity to it at this particular moment. And my conversation with the judges on Friday was very well received, and it was a very pleasant meeting. For nearly two hours, we got to spend together, and I don't, I just don't see that we have a major issue. We just got to straighten out some of the wrinkles.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure I understand what is city policy in regards to expenditures that require council approval? You know, I've been here for 10 years now. I've gone through this a few different times. times, I want to make sure that I'm clear exactly what our policy is. What I understand our policy, city policy with City of Sparks, is that any expenditure, singular or cumulative, or a single action, anything over 24,999 dollars must come in front of the city council. Is that, is that not correct?
You know, maybe I can chime in here a little bit, if you don't mind.
Please.
First of all, I've, I've looked over these expenditures, okay? And their purpose is what the city council's looking at tonight. I have not seen anything that's illegal, uh, or inappropriate about these expenditures. Now, I can tell you that one of the difficulties I'm having with all of this is that the law is not clear. There's some law out there that says that the city's purchasing ordinances do not apply to the court. And if that's the case, then the judge is certainly correct in her statement to you tonight, that, uh, as far as what the courts do, that you don't necessarily have to bring that to the city council. That is, a $25,000 ceiling cap would not necessarily apply to these types of expenditures. Now, does the city council have the opportunity to review those? Absolutely. The question might come in, it might be focused on, on other issues, that is, whether or not this is an appropriate expenditure from an assessment fund created by Nevada law with specific enumerated expenditures set out in that. Now, I'm not in a position where I'm going to opine on something along those lines, but I don't see anything that, uh, certainly is your city attorney, someone who is interested in and vested in protecting the city's treasury, that anything awry or amiss has gone on as far as departmental spending here.
I just want to go and clarify, purchasing policy, that the courts are outside our purchasing policy, is that a City of Sparks municipal code?
No, that is case law.
Okay.
And case law, uh, the revised statutes, the way it works is our charter trumps revised statutes when there's a conflict. Revised statutes trump our ordinances when there's, when there's a conflict. And there's case law out there that says Nevada purchasing laws, which triggers a $25,000 approval, may not be applicable to the City of Sparks. Now, that case was based on that, that opinion, was based on the Nevada Supreme Court case that has since been, in my opinion, reversed.
Absolutely.
So, I don't feel comfortable sitting here telling you that, that anything the court has done is, is inappropriate, nor do I feel comfortable telling you that our purchasing laws, uh, our purchasing ordinances are not 100% applicable. I can say that there seems to be, uh, a good argument that they are not applicable, and the law of the land in Nevada right now is that they are not applicable.
And of course, it's our opinion that the case law has not been overturned, that it is still good law. And, um, folks, all I can say is, um, once there's a conflict that Mr., um, that Mr. Adams invoked, we obviously have a constitutional right to representation, and I know you all understand that. We are using court funds as all other courts in this state use under these circumstances. And there will not be any case law you'll find on that because it has never been challenged in the past. You can go to Reno Municipal, you can go to Reno Justice, you can go to Sparks Justice, you can go down south. Courts use these funds for legal representation when there is an issue involving co-equal branches of government or other types of issues arise.
Yeah, the.
The option to that, I'm just, the option to that is it comes out of the general fund, which is taxpayer money. And while we can split hairs here, the assessment funds are those that the state requires us to collect for the operations of the court, they are paid for by the users of the court, which 70% are, are Sparks citizens, 30% aren't, but they are paid by the users of the court. This is not coming from the tax pay base of the City of Sparks.
Okay, Sean, I think we're getting off the agenda item here just a tad, maybe, uh, a little south of where it should be, so, can we get back to the motion? We have a motion on the floor, is there any other discussion? Everyone understand the motion?
I have just one question.
Go ahead.
I don't know how much money is in your fund to pay for this attorney, but if you run out of money, then we're responsible for it.
No.
Doesn't come back to the general fund?
That is, no.
Okay, that's all right.
That is our responsibility, we understand what our obligations are, and our monies, and what we have to work within, just as you folks have to with your budget. It, it is what we have. We don't then come to the city, or we don't take that money, spend it all, and then come back to you and say, okay, now you have to fund us.
I only ask that question because you said you, you will be, you need to have representation if you want it, and if you don't have the money, then we pay for it.
No, you do not pay for it.
Okay.
There are many other organizations, and the funding will come from elsewhere, let's put it that way. There will be plenty of meekie involved in this matter if it goes forward.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Everyone understand the motion?
Could I have repeat the motion, please? I just want to be very clear what we're doing.
And, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but can I just make one last clarification?
Okay, please.
What I meant, when I, when I said that our expenditures out of that fund don't come in front of this body, what I meant by that is for approval. They come in front of you as a matter of transparency, there isn't a dime that the court spends that is not transparent to all of you, and it doesn't come to you for approval. This is the first time anything has ever come to you for approval, and that includes everything that's been paid since November. So, that was my point. Sean's absolutely right, that it's on there, but it's after the fact, and it is a matter of transparency, because of course, it comes out of, um, because all the monies we collect go into the city treasury, so of course, it's going to come out under the city's signature.
Okay, let's, uh.
The motion was made by Councilman Carrigan to approve what the city manager asked, and that was that we approve this report, and that there would be a, a recall of any questions, and that will be brought to you in another time as a staff report.
Okay. Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one, Mr. Schmidt is a no. Thank you, Judge. Moving on, 6.1, consideration of possible approval of a $1,000 donation for Partners in Parks and Recreation from the Surtoma Club of Sparks. Tracy Dominguez, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, council members, my name is Tracy Dominguez, acting Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, before you is a recommendation to accept a $1,000 donation from, um, the Surtoma Club of Sparks. This is their third consecutive year. Without their $1,000, our, um, uh, Junior Giants program would not occur. It serves 85 to 100 kids each year, and, uh, vast majority of these children are in low-income areas of Sparks.
Questions for Tracy? Go ahead.
Is moved to approve to accept the $1,000 donation to Partners in Parks and Recreation?
For a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve Agenda Item 6.1, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
6.2, consider, thanks Tracy. I like it when you bring these non-controversial agenda items to us.
Bringing money, yeah.
Easy, easy to approve. 6.2, consideration and possible acceptance of a donation from the Rotary Club of Sparks in the amount of $2,500. Chief Kiefer?
That's right. Steve Kiefer from the Police Department, also a claim non-controversial, and is a $2,500 donation from the Rotary Club of Sparks. We've, uh, we will designate if approved that money to, uh, our victim advocate for management with supervision on releasing funds to victims of crimes, whether it's for clothing, shelter, food, all in emergency situations.
Questions?
Let's differ.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 6.2, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, 6.4, Sean, do we want to take these all at once? Do you want to talk about all four of them at once? 6.4, 5, 6, 3, all three at once?
Yeah, Chris is, Chris is before you, but the general business items all amount to resolutions involving folks who are not part of bargaining groups. Item 7.1 and 7.2 can be taken at that portion.
Definitely.
Because they do involve collective bargaining results.
Yeah, I just meant general business. So we'll discuss 6.4, 6.5, 6.6, and then if there's any public comment after the discussion, we'll let you go ahead and do it. Go ahead, Chris.
Question for 6.3, can we?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'm lost today.
Are you lost?
I am, but now I've been found. 6.3, 6.4, 6.5, 6.6, I knew there was four of them. All right, go ahead, Chris, before.
Good afternoon, Chris Severson, Human Resources Manager, and I'd like to say that maybe HR by its nature is sometimes confrontational, so I'll just warn you right up front, it's not, not bringing the money. I wanted to start off and preface the resolutions and the agenda item and the, um, public hearings by talking a little bit about where we've been and what we've done. I know that when we had our budget workshop last week, some of you heard the history, but I thought for the record, it did serve to, um, repeat. In 2009, the City of Sparks was faced with declining revenue base again. We began the process of change. The first step was to go to our employees and ask for their assistance. Over a series of focus groups, over 500 suggestions were brought forward. In 2010, the city, in response to a still declining economy, took action to implement a plan and the process of examining our business and design a strategic sustainability plan, the Sparks Sustainability Services Initiative. Most of the SSSI, or Sparks Sustainability Services Initiative, SSSI is just easier, was born from those employee focus groups. And I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the things that the SSSI focused on. First was a review and rewrite of the city's strategic goals by the city council in July to refocus the city on sustainability. The creation of the SSSI platform gathered employee input from focus groups. We also gathered input from the Sparks Citizens Advisory Council. We reviewed core services of every department in the city. These were tied to legal requirements, strategic goals, and eventually the city budget. We reviewed core services across the city that allowed objective measurement. We also evaluated them on the basis that core services to the city, the highest ranked core services, should be reduced at a lower level than those were not as highly ranked. And I know you've all seen that huge ginormous eye chart. We also established a method to, um, make these cuts on a sliding scale. We reviewed our organizational structure, streamlining and redistributing functions, starting with the executive structure in November, and following with an overall restructuring plan that was given to you last Monday. We reviewed pay structures, including job descriptions and pay schedules, including addresses, employee, addressing employees working out of class, and compression issues caused by inequity of pay schedules. We completed a comprehensive study of the fees charged by the city in all areas, with the resulting knowledge that the city only truly controls only 4% of their revenues. The city has taken the stand that to remain static is a mistake, and only through planned dynamic change can we hope to survive and maintain service levels acceptable to our citizens. Last Monday, the city council took the steps to approve the SSSI Phase Two, Organizational Structure and Employee Complement. Today, adoption of the employee resolution changes, um, items 6.3 through 6.7, and the memorandum of understandings will put into place the ability to enact these changes. You have the agenda items in front of you, I can answer any questions that you may have, starting with Agenda Item 6.3.
Questions, Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you. Uh, Chris, just real quick, because, um, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood about reclassification, there's, and, and, everybody can follow along with me up here. On page 152, on the bottom, it talks about reclassification of positions, and when it, it says, "When an employee's position is reclassified to a higher salary range." Would you like to go over that?
Um, yes.
And the reason I'm bringing this up is because one of the local news stations said that they've received numerous emails of people that are upset with this, and I want to go on the record saying I didn't receive any, and I would think that the place to begin would be with the people that are going to vote on this, and not the people that are going to report on it. So for all those people that sent emails, I would have really appreciated hearing from them, but I did not, and I just want to go on the record and say that I did not receive one email on this.
Certainly.
Okay, but I want to make sure that everybody understands about reclassification, and I also want to go over the definition of the compression, salary compression also. So if you wouldn't mind saying it.
The premise that of any human resources system and compensation system lies in the job description process, and it lies in writing a job description that accurately reflects what an employee is responsible to do on a daily basis, the requirements of those positions to hire into that position, and just basically how to do their job, uh, on a day-to-day basis. We went through, and we met with all of our department directors, and we also had sent a message to employees that said, "If you feel that you are working out of class or out of your classification, please let your department director or human resources know, and we will look at those jobs." I personally met with each department director, addressed those positions where it was felt that the employee job description was not an accurate reflection of what they were doing, and addressed those issues in this, um, program. Each of our employee contracts, as well as our employee resolutions, contain a section on reclassification, and dictates how those reclassifications will be handled. And so, a minimum of a 5% increase, um, would be given in those cases. A maximum, did I say minimum? Oh, sorry, maximum of 5%. Does that answer your question on reclassification?
Yeah, it does, and, and also that, from the numbers I received, we have, uh, 453 employees in the city, and only 31, and, and if I'm wrong, tell me that, but I'm looking at the numbers, and only 31 of the positions are going to fall into this category, correct?
Um, there were more than that that were reclassified or have job title changes, but only 31, uh, were eligible for an increase.
Okay, so that's less than 10% of our workforce is, falls under this category.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, to, any other questions on reclassification?
Compression, you want to do?
Compression has, has come about for two different reasons, and salary compression is the distance, if you will, between an employee and their supervisor. And it can happen either in their pay range compression, or it can be in their salary compression. And we ran into both types of compression, where, uh, either a subordinate, and I don't like using that word, but an employee, a supervisor makes within 10% or less of what the employees that report to them do. Both City of Reno and Washto County have formal policies on width, we did not have a formal policy. Reno was anywhere from 5 up, Washto County was 15%. We felt that 10% was an appropriate width. We found in some instances where, um, the ranges were not correct, so the ranges were not within 10%, and sometimes we found where the actual salary was less than 10% or in some instances, the supervisor made less than the people that worked for them. So, in regards to these, uh, compression issues, we are not taking immediate action to, um, change anyone's salary. What we did is we've changed the range, and if the employee then is eligible due to a merit, as a, because of the range change, upon their anniversary date or their review date, they would review, bleh, be reviewed for up to a 5% increase for a merit increase only, um, not. And, and I would just talk, if I could give you a real life example. We have been working, um, since Chief Keeper was promoted to the Chief of Police, we have been working with the chief to try to come up with an appropriate pay range for a Deputy Chief of Police. And frankly, the lieutenants and the lieutenant commanders are at such a salary level with overtime and with special pays, that anyone to take the job at the range where it was set would have to take a pay cut, to take a promotion. So that's just a, an example where we've been working for, what, over nine months with the chief, to try to fill a Deputy Chief position and have been unable to. So that's, that's my compression speak.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I wanted to put that on the record, because some of the department heads are running into that position, and, and to me, you know, I'll use the fire chief, because he's the one that came up and talked to me about it. But basically, as of July 1st, because they are at will employees, and because the city manager can dictate, they are going to take a 7.5% pay cut. At that time, our, our fire chief would make less than the division chiefs that work for him. And then my, and, and to the point where he's almost thinking about retiring, because he's making less than the people that are working for him. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, salary compensation is everything, but I want, if he does retire, I want to know how we're going to find a fire chief to come in from any, and, and first of all, I like to promote from within, if you take a look who the fire chief is and who the police chief is, they, you know, they started off as, as patrolmen and firefighters in this, and worked their way up, and that's the way it should be. But tell me why a division chief would want to be a fire chief, what, you get more responsibility, you, you escape the cocoon of being protected by a, a union, and you have more responsibility? And you could get fired at any time. So tell me how we're supposed to fill that billet? The only way you can do it is to go out somewhere else and find somebody who's willing to come in and take that job. Now you have somebody that doesn't know the City of Sparks, doesn't know the firefighters, and is going to come in and probably work for less than the division chiefs are working for. And so that is where we really ran into problems. Now, where, where do the problems stem from? Well, I'll be the first one to say it's probably collective bargaining, and it's probably, uh, binding arbitration, and I'll say that. Because you can't regulate the fire chief and the police chiefs without having taken into consideration all the pay. And, and not only is pay, to me, because I'm going to, I'm going to make a, a change, or I'm going to propose a change later, but I also think it has to do with title and responsibility, because who is going to want to take over a job if you don't have a title, or if you don't at least have the compensation that goes along with that job? Because nobody in their right mind is ever going to take more responsibility for less money and less, uh, I guess, protection. So thanks for putting that on the record. So thanks for putting that on the record.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Chris, fill in the numbers here, because I have them, but I don't have them in front of me. The restructuring has saved 1.2 million, 2.3 million?
The overall SSSI initiative is 2.3 million in direct salary-only savings, not including benefits or anything else.
And the raise is amount to about 9% of that?
It's $100,000.
$100,000, okay. I just want to get that on the record.
That's correct.
No, that's fine.
5%.
Well, it's 2.2 million.
On straight salary, it's right at 9%, not including benefits or any of the other. So it depends on which number.
So where do the 2.3 million come from?
The 2.3 are position savings and benefits and all that.
Okay, but that's still, that's an overall $2.3 million savings.
That's correct.
And it costs $100,000. In my book, that's a 5%. I always do the math up here. I'll do it again.
He's got his hands out.
I got my hands out.
That's the math guy over there, Jeff.
Okay, questions? Any other questions, Mr. Lawson?
I want to go back to the $100,000 increase. So approximately 30,000 of the 100,000 is going to the management people. Is that correct?
If you give me just a minute, I brought those numbers.
Okay, I already know the answer.
Should I just say yes, sir?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
30,000. 70,000 is going to people below management level.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll take your word for it.
Yes, that is correct.
I know I did the numbers.
I just want to see if you're there, yeah. Well, you've got to act like a lawyer sometimes and know the answer to your own question. Yeah.
You don't make enough to act like a lawyer.
That's true. Not smart enough to be one either. So, and the other thing I wanted to clarify was that Mike kept saying, you know, how can we hire somebody? And the key word that he left out, I believe, is how do we hire a qualified chief to replace the chiefs we have now? Because I'll tell you what, the two chiefs we have now are doing an outstanding job. We don't have overtime problems. We don't have people calling in sick problems. We don't have a lot of the problems that are just, you know, west of here. And that's because we have quality people working here. So I just want to make sure that the chiefs are getting their due recognition for what they have done with their budgets and their people.
Okay, Mike, you wanted to talk, but I think you want to talk on OE3. Isn't that 7.1, 7.2? Or was it this? You're concerned with, you want to speak about the OE3, okay. So we'll go ahead and take these, then we'll get into that one in a minute. Okay, any other further questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I wanted to just talk and make some clarifications, if I can, on some of the terms we've used and what's totally happened here. You said that all of these employees are being adjusted, reclassified to another classification. How do these 31, how many new classifications are being made for these 31 employees?
You know, I didn't do the number by classifications, because some of them are multiple. For example, in the crew supervisor area, there's more than one crew supervisor. So I'm sorry, I didn't do the numbers.
Because this is where I have my issue with it, is that reclassifying somebody to fill a job position is one thing, but then changing the job, the job classification to a new title and everything else, and bringing in a whole new pay range and everything associated with that, that is a totally different subject. And it's, and we've got them all combined here.
We do.
We didn't take and move somebody within their classification or move somebody to a new, to a classification we had. We've changed classifications and then changed salary ranges for those new classifications, which on the surface appears that you can suggest, say, yeah, it's only a $100,000 cost. But that $100,000 cost repeats itself every year, because you've changed into a new category and within a whole new pay range. It could be seven years, 10 years out for that item. So there is a multiplication effect here that decisions you're making today affect you a long time to come.
Correct.
Compression issues, you know, this city council put this issue on the table, because when we, and I'll take the fire chief as an example of that, is when the fire chief gave up 7.5% and a subordinate did not give up 7.5%, yeah, you're going to get compression real quick. I mean, when the top comes down and followers don't follow the leader, you've got that problem. And that's throughout the city, we've got those issues on out there. Now, my question is, whose problem is this? Is this truly our problem? If people didn't go through with what we asked them to do for everybody to take a 7.5% pay cut last year, everybody would be in the same sheet of music. That didn't happen. Because of department heads or under the authority of Mr. Carey, they weren't given a whole lot of choices, they gave up their 7.5%. Bang, you've got this issue now, deal on it there. I don't believe going back and saying, "Okay," because we didn't follow through on what we wanted as a council. We allowed different bargaining groups to do different things. Some gave up clothing allowances, some didn't. I'm not sure that this is a fair way to go ahead and handle this situation. And one of the things I saw throughout the talking points and everything else like that, and it really kind of hit me home with this, is that we have 450 roughly employees, and it was said that these employees have been reclassified, are taking on more responsibility than they have in the past. I want to know what, of which employee of 450 we have is not doing more than they did three years ago? And so to say that of, to 450 employees, 31 of you, I want to give you a raise, the other 420, I want 6% off your paycheck, I'm not sure is a fair situation.
If I may, first of all, to the point that you made, that the cost of the $100,000 will go forward, that is correct. However, the savings associated with the positions that were eliminated or changed go forward as well. So I would argue that both go forward. Second-
The difference here, if I may, is the savings don't change. Savings today is the same savings a year from now, because they're not going to change. The cost for your $100,000 does continue going on up.
With a limited time period, because they will hit that, hit the cap. But I'm not going to. Secondly, when you talk about employees doing more, I will sit here and I will say that every single employee in this organization is doing more, every single one. We're all doing more with less. Someone asked me today about human resources and how human resources hasn't taken a cut. We're at, with this new organization change, 50% of the staff that we used to do, everybody, from the maintenance gentleman over here and ladies, Darlene's still here, you know, they're doing more. We're all doing more with less. What we focused on in the reclassifications is when the change took it, and I'll use your words, Councilman Schmidt, to a new job. For example, our police records manager in the police department was over the records function. The police records, the, I just lost the word, permits and things that you have, work permits and things like that. That position has changed now. We have eliminated a position, a sergeant position that used to oversee the dispatch area, and that position is now going to oversee dispatch and records, two completely distinct and separate functions. That's when it becomes a new job. And I agree with you to some extent, that in some instances, we took an existing job and reclassified it, and in some cases, we made it a new job. And we struggled with that as a committee that was looking at this. At what point is it a new job? And we probably should have said, "They're either all reclassifications or they're all new jobs," because it was a real difficult position to take. So I don't disagree with you at all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, we'll take the Agenda Item 6.1, unless there's any other questions or anything.
6.3.
Okay, let's start with 6.3. Questions or looking for a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve 6.3, which is Resolution 31778. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.4 with Resolution 3178. Questions or looking for a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion. I've moved to approve item 6.4.
Do you have a second? Second. We have a motion by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 6.4, Resolution 3178. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4 to 1, Mr. Schmidt, no. Okay, 6.5, Resolution 3179. Questions or do we have a motion?
I'm all locked up.
Go ahead, Ratty.
Moved to approve the Movement Management Professional Technical Resolution, Number 3179.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson, excuse me, to approve. Any further discussion on 3179? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4 to 1, Mr. Schmidt, no. Mr. Carrigan?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and start. I don't think I've turned on my microphone yet. Okay, there you go. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure that we, on our page two of the talking points that we got, one of the things that was stressed was about the salary compensation. And basically, the second point was made, that an executive in management positions realizes differential in pay and weigh that against the higher level of responsibility required by the position, morale takes a sharp dive and performance and motivation can suffer. And these situations could lead to resignations or retirements. And I wanted to propose a quick administrative change to this resolution in the position of Community Services Director, and I'll explain why. I think that the Community Services Director, when you look at this, is really the number three in command in this city. And I think when the Assistant City Manager or the City Manager is out of town, at least this Assistant City Manager to Community Services Director steps up into that position. If both the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager are out of town, that position steps up into the City Manager's position. I'm not proposing any kind of a compensation as far as monetarily, but I think that because a title means a lot, and I think that the responsibility of the third-in-command, the takeover, I think I see no problem with changing this to be Community Service Director/Assistant City Manager. It's a title change, and I think along with that title comes some responsibility, and I think that that person should have the Assistant City Manager position. Down the road, Neil, if you're around here anyplace, if you decide to leave, when you're trying to recruit somebody for that job, and you could say, "Listen, if you're going to have to take the position of Assistant City Manager or City Manager, but you get no title," I just don't think that's a selling point. And I'm not, like I said, the salary compensation does not change, but I want to make a motion that we approve this with my administrative change to Community Service Director/Assistant City Manager.
Second. Questions? Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Mr. Smith. Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only question is, which pay category does that fit into?
The one employee-
I don't see a pay category that says Community Assistant Manager/Assistant City-
It's Community Services Director.
Okay, but you just changed the title to Community Assistant Director/Assistant-
I said, there's no compensation change, it's just a title addition.
I'm not aware that you can change a title without having a cost classification for that title.
Well, I just made the motion, and we'll see where it goes. But I think-
I got a comment.
Comments? Ms. Ratty?
Stepping back from this particular suggestion into the package of items that we're looking at today that support the Sparks Sustainable Initiative. The reason that I support it, even though I understand some of the frustration where a handful of people are getting the possibility of an increase in their pay because their range is changing and other folks are getting laid off or looking at that 6% reduction, the reason I support the overall package is because I believe after four years of reductions and cuts and early retirement programs and going from 700 employees to 450-plus employees, that our organizational chart had become irrational. And the reason I support all of this is because I think that the leadership has taken a step back and brought some rationality back into this organizational chart, the titles, the job descriptions. I believe you did that, looking at this role. I believe you aligned the salary expectations to this title and this job description, and I don't want from the dais to step out of that rational process by changing titles or changing anything, any part of that rational process. Because I think this was done by human resources professionals in conjunction with department heads, driven by a city manager who we hired to run the city. So I won't be supporting this motion, because as a package, I think the whole thing is rational, even though there are parts of it that are a bit hard to swallow in this economy.
Questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Everyone understand the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing no questions, please vote. Okay, it's three against, two for, so the motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Have moved to approve 3180.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve Agenda Item 6.6, as stated, 3180 is the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes three to two. Carrigan and Schmidt against. Okay. Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Chris. Are you doing 7-1 and 7-2? Okay, moving on to, now we'll give you a chance, Mike, when we get into the 7-1, 7-2. Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
I'm sorry for the interruption. It's been brought to my attention that I made a mistake on 6.3. I thought I had hit the no button, and it appeared on the screen as yes, so I need to go for the record to change my vote on 6.3 to no.
Do we, is that okay, Miss, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 7.1, are you going to go over both these 7-1 and 7-2 together, or?
I don't really have anything more to add than what's already been stated.
Okay.
This just takes a little bit different format, because it is a memorandum of understanding with the union.
Okay, questions from the dais before we go to a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll go open the public hearing on 7.1. We have a public comment, Mr. Mike Trussell. Come on up, Mike, finally. Probably forgot what you came here for, huh?
A little over three years ago, when the pool staffing started down at the maintenance yard, employees began training one another to do many different jobs. This was good in theory, but not very efficient. All the training had a negative effect on the efficiency and quality of the work performed. This was documented daily with the maintenance management system that we have, which is now being compared to private contractor bids for our maintenance jobs. It's kind of like having a general practitioner and a surgeon going at the same thing, you know, where we've turned into handyman.
It's not apples-and-apples comparison by any means. In almost 17 years I've worked for the city, I've held seven different positions with four different departments. Being efficient has always been very important, but because our customers are so critical of our work, quality is very important as well. Sometimes it takes more time to get it right the first time. Contractors worry more about getting the job done as fast as possible to maximize profit. With the restructuring of this maintenance worker position to a worker 1, 2, 3, 4 system, where employees' pay scales are now is what determines what position you will be grandfathered into. Some of the would-be grandfathered-in worker 3 and 4 employees that would be getting raises have little or no experience in more than a couple of departments. No one can possibly meet the qualifications outlined in these proposed job descriptions for these worker series 3 and 4s. Demanding employees do so many different duties will not help efficiency or quality of workmanship. With fewer employees and more layoffs where it's told to expect ahead, the training needed would only add to the unbalanced comparisons with the private contractor bids. Why is there a need to change our current job description at all? It already states and other duties which may be assigned. We are all doing more with less. You can depend on us to continue to do this without reclassifying the ma- You can depend on us to continue to do this without reclassifying the maintenance workers and changing our current job descriptions. I have heard that the new system is so the young go-getter employees can be promoted to worker 3 and 4 levels, and the older not-so-go-getter employees will be left at worker 2 level. This would erase all city seniority outside the different levels come layoff time. That way, the not-so-go-getters would become just another victim of the tough economic times rather than being forced to step it up or be let go. I hope that truly isn't the case, but it does seem possible. I was nervous about speaking to you all today. I value my job very much and did want to, I did not want to put a target on myself for speaking out against this. Uh, the rank-and-file OE3 members all voted on this, and the majority voted no to the changes months ago. Many of us have held previous positions within the city that were eliminated due to cutbacks. We've taken anywhere from 15 to 45% pay cuts as a result. We do what we are asked to do to the best of our ability. Most of us, our families and friends, all live in Sparks. We are proud to serve this community. We know that we play an important role in keeping Sparks as nice as it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, I know that wasn't easy to say, you know, we're, I, I don't think there's a target on you, you know, you, you say what's on your mind, and I think we appreciate that more than, than anything, and we understand. It's not a perfect system, it's not perfect by any means, and it's, uh, very difficult for us, too, to do these kind of things, but thanks for, uh, thanks for, uh, having the gumption to step up and, and say what's on your mind. Appreciate it. Okay, questions? Uh, Mike, and then Ron Schmidt.
Chris, you wanna get up here and answer that? Because I wasn't aware that they voted they didn't like this, because, you know, following along with what Julia said just a few minutes ago about, you know, everybody was on board with this, and, uh, the reason that she, you know, didn't support something I put on there is because it was a change, well, all of a sudden now, I'm looking at something that I didn't hear of before. So, I mean, is that true, that, that they don't wanna do this?
Um, about three years ago, the pooled maintenance concept came into being where we wanted to look at the maintenance workers, um, some sewer drain utilities, some street sweepers, some, um, traffic, some, um, streets. And we looked at the numbers shrinking, and we said, um, wouldn't it be a better model to use, um, everyone on a good day outside to be mowing, mowing the parks, and everybody on a bad day to be painting inside a building? Um, so we've been working with the maintenance group, um, for about three years on this pooled maintenance concept. Um, one of the things that, uh, was required is we had numerous meetings with, um, the union representative, uh, Mr. Kilgore, and with members of the maintenance worker series. They brought forth questions. Uh, most of the questions were, like what Mike said, around training, that initially, how could anybody be fully trained? And we said, we know that training is gonna be an issue, and we made a commitment to the operating engineers that we would be, um, offering them training, um, and to my understanding, I met with a couple of them last week, that is being offered. Um, some are choosing to take advantage of it, and some of them aren't. Um, also, as a requirement of this, we were required to do what's called impact bargaining, which means that if we wanna make a change to the union contract and the, um, union itself has some concerns, that we're required to sit down and meet with them and address all of their concerns, which we have done. Uh, I don't know if they took a vote, um, specifically, that, that's not something that we requested is a vote. I know that there were concerns, and to my understanding, we have met with them at every opportunity to allay these concerns. I believe that there are some that are not happy with this. I also believe that there are some that are. I don't know the numbers, because, uh, again, we didn't ask for a vote. A couple of things that Mike said, um, I heard last week, one of the comments that he said, that people were targeted into these ranges where their current pay was, and I don't know where that misconception came out from, and I, I met with a couple of the street sweeper operators last week and said, people are classified based on the jobs that they're assigned to do, not where their pay is. And the assignment of the 1, 2, 3, 4 is based on what the job requires. Um, so, I'm not sure where that misconception came from. So, to answer your question, are they all on board with the maintenance 1 through 4? Probably not.
No, the, the reason I brought it up, it sounds like more than just a few. I mean, I'd like to get this settled before I know what, you know, I mean, so far, we, I haven't had anybody, you know, say, tell me on the ones that we've already approved that they had a problem with that. Now, this is the first time I've heard this.
Okay, next is Mr. Schmidt.
I'm just gonna follow up on Mr. Carrigan's question. Um, I, I thought it was standard operating procedure that anything brought before us to do with the bargaining group was already approved by that bargaining group before it brought to us.
Um, I did, I did give all of this information to Mr. Kilgore, and he told me to go forward with this. Their, their union representative.
And I'm going to ask.
I would not bring it, I would not bring it forward if the, if I did not have assurances that it was going to be approved by the bargaining unit.
Tell me, tell me where we're at, then, if we, um, ask for a continuance on this item until we get a formal union vote on this thing. I mean, we've, we've gone through this whole thing of approving categories, approving stuff, approving positions, approving stuff, and.
Let me back up, let me back up for just a minute. Um, when the city looks at jobs and the city decides where that job needs to be classified in regards to other positions within the city, that's a city purview. Then we sit down with the union and we talk about this, and in the past, when we've had reclassifications, we've sat down with them, we've said, this is what we wanna do, and there's a good, uh, exchange of information, and there's a good exchange of, well, I think this, and have you looked at that? And we have done that, um, I don't wanna say ad nauseam, but we have done that on, I would venture to say, at least 15 different occasions with the, with the operating engineers on this item. Um, when I sent this information and I spoke to Mr. Kilgore, who is the authorized business representative, I said, we are taking the maintenance worker 1 through 4 to council on March 28th, and he said, okay.
Here's where I'm at with this.
Um, I'm sorry. Can I just finish one more thing?
Sure.
I, I just want to make clear that the NRS and the, the Fair Labor Standards Act says that the city does get to decide pay rates and it gets to decide classifications. All that's required is that we meet with them and we do impact negotiations, which we did. We still have to have the ability to run the city and to, um, get the pay rates where they should be in relation to other jobs, and that's what we've done.
I wanna get back to a, to a fairness issue here, and maybe I'm gonna mix two things on up, but it's my understanding that this particular bargaining group has come to the table, put 6% pay cuts on the table, they're ready to agree that, they're gonna pick up half of their new PERS costs, any increases in PERS from now on they're gonna do, so one bargaining group that has stepped to the plate and put a great chunk, in fact, it's my understanding, a third of all the money we need to go ahead and balance this, this, uh, deficit is coming from this group.
That's correct.
On out there. Kudos to this group.
Absolutely.
I think they've done the right thing. They've stepped up. They need to be applauded for what they've done. They're an example of, they understand where we're at, doing it. Now, to come back and say, well, we're following the Fair Labor Standards Act, and this is all we have to do, because we get to control the classifications and everything else like that, I'm not sure, I wouldn't wanna come back and bargain with the city next time around, because if you give, 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 and you come back and say, you know, take it or leave it, folks, you know, that's, that's not a good situation to be in, and I would be much, um, you know, because I was prepared to vote for this item, because I thought that, you know, from all the work they've done already, you know, that this is ready to go. Now, I understand, this is not what they want, this is not what they're willing to do. Uh, I think this item needs to be vetted a little bit deeper than it is right now.
I, I just believe that by taking us away from the pooled maintenance concept, um, it will greatly enhance, greatly be a hindrance to getting the job done, a huge hindrance to our, um, ability to do what we need to do.
And what I see here is a little bit of education is gonna go a long ways. I think that we need to sit down and, and really sit down one-on-one with the folks and let them know what this pooled maintenance, listen to their concerns, they articulated some concerns here on it. I think they need to be addressed. Uh, you know, I, I just think it's just say, well, this is the way it's gonna be, and.
I, I just can't stress to you enough, uh, Mr. Etchart, uh, Mike Baselli, when he was here, Danny Hamlin, Ron, we have met with them, uh, seriously, I don't know, 15 times?
So would you say there's a problem between top and bottom communication? Everybody's on the same sheet here?
I would say that, uh, the difficulty is, um, they like the way that things are now, and the city needs to move forward.
Yeah.
That's my position. But I can't, really seriously, Councilman Schmidt, we have met with them, and we have in writing and verbally addressed every single question they brought forward.
I, I appreciate all the work you've done on it. I mean, you know, this is one item I was prepared to vote yes on, but I guess I have to stay consistent tonight.
Ms. Ratty?
Two things. I, I guess I, I still am confused, and perhaps, um, we can get Mr. Kilgore here, if we do choose to continue this, on how we get to a memorandum of understanding if the members of that bargaining unit feel like they voted no on the contents of that memorandum. So, I need to understand that a little bit better, and perhaps that's something Mr. Kilgore can answer. Could you address, because, um, I think you addressed a couple of the concerns that were brought up, but the one that I think we missed and haven't really gotten clarity around yet is they're calling it the young go-getter and the old, older not-so-go-getter, the seniority issue, the civil service issue. I'm not sure exactly what the issue is there, but the perception that this is somehow set up to put folks out to pasture?
I'm also a bit concerned, because if you look at the civil service minutes last month, um, I myself took forward, um, an amendment to the civil service to allow people who previously had these special titles to carry for, to carry that service forward and that title forward into this maintenance worker 1 through 4. So specifically, the city service that those people enjoyed would not be ta, taken away from them with this classification.
The civil service standing?
The civil service protection based on city service. Uh, we specifically, the way civil service works is it says that your city service certainly guides all layoffs.
Mm-hmm.
And it also says that you have the right to bump into a position you previously held or, um, a position in the job family. Because we're changing the titles and we're saying, a sewer drain utility worker doesn't really exist anymore, it's a maintenance worker 2.
So there's.
I personally went to civil service and said, for at least a year, and then we'll come back in a year and address it, can we tie that specific title to a maintenance worker 2, so that if a situation comes up where a person is losing their position, that they don't lose it simply because we made these title changes, because that's just not fair?
Okay, so their concern would then be that two years from now, we're still laying people off, and they're bumping rights, there's no similarly titled position to bump back into?
And, and I'm, in speaking with civil service, I said, let's do it for a minimum of a year, and then let's come back.
Okay.
So, I've tried to address these concerns.
Okay.
Anyone else in the public wanna speak? Go ahead.
I wanna clarify a few, uh, issues. Number one, uh, and Ron, Mr. Schmidt pointed out that OE3 has come to the table with the 6% reduction, but I also have to remember that last year, from the outside looking in, they came with nothing.
Nothing.
They did not make any compromise whatsoever. Let me ask you, the other question is, you have a memorandum of understanding between the city and the operating engineers, local number 3. Is that a signed document?
Uh, I don't have it signed by operating engineers, but Mr. Kilgore said for me to go ahead with it as presented.
So if Mr. Kilgore backtracks at this point?
I, I can't control that.
So if he back, if he backpedals, there is no agreement?
That's correct.
Okay. That clarified a lot.
Mr. Carrigan? Yeah, Ed, you brought up exactly what I was gonna bring up. If you look at the last page of this, there's four signatures that are, that are needed on it. One of them is the operating engineers, local union number 3, Dwayne Kilgore. And so if we, this is a MOU, and you have to have, you know, two parties to say yes, because I don't know how many MOUs we've signed on this city council, but there have been a lot, okay? And if you don't wanna sign it, then you don't sign it. So I think that, you know, my, my druthers is to move ahead with this, exactly as written, and if they don't wanna sign it, then, uh, we'll cross that bridge when, uh, they, we come to it, so.
Okay, I got another public comment from Byron Jennings?
Yeah.
Come on up, Byron. Come on up to the front here, please.
I just have one question I'd like to say. Was there a vote about this 1, 2, 3, 4 at one time? And the union membership that I was at actually voted no on that 1, 2, 3, 4. And that was when Dan Benner's was still here.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
How long ago?
Uh, well, that was, Dan hasn't been here for what, maybe a year, six months? Six months? So, six months, and then he, he left, and that's when we got the new union represent, uh, representative. But that vote was taken. Unless they had another vote after I was there, that vote was no by our, uh, by our people, okay?
All right, yeah, that's, I, I think, uh, Mr. Carrigan said it all. We'll, we'll move along with this. If you don't wanna sign it, then don't sign it. I don't know what else to do.
And there is a question I'd like to ask. I've been with the city for a few years myself, and I know where I'll be, I'll be in that class 2 category. If there are layoffs, I'm afraid that I'll be laid off, because I won't be able to bump up to a 3 or 4. So I'll be pretty much out the door. Isn't that true? Go ahead.
Unless we were to fully eliminate the maintenance worker class 2, I don't believe that Mr. Jennings would be laid off. I believe he has one of our highest seniority, uh, positions in the city.
That would be correct, but, so you say, I mean, okay, well, that's true, but I'm thinking about not just myself.
Thanks, Byron.
Thank you. Byron, I guess it is, I'm sorry.
Okay, anybody else in the public wanna speak?
Oh, sorry.
Let me finish the public hearing, then we'll open up for discussion. Okay, closing, bring it back to the council for action. Ms. Ratty?
So, I guess my, my question would be what the impact would be of a delay of two weeks, so we could hear from the OE3 representative?
To advise the council, I think that that's within your purview to delay this if you have questions of the union representative, and, uh, you could make that motion tonight and continue this public hearing on. Uh, I did want to, uh, comment that, uh, this is, um, a little bit different than, uh, the normal nature of collective bargaining, because this is, uh, a qualified, uh, discussion between the city and its employees, and they use the term impact bargaining. We're bargaining, uh, with the group only on its impact, uh, to, to the work that, that is to be performed by still remaining members of the union. And so it isn't something where, uh, in the end, uh, the union can say no, and the city, uh, preserves its ability to move forward if it's in the best interests of, of what could occur. Uh, what we do engage in is, uh, just what Chris said, many, many meetings, uh, to hear their impacts and, uh, address the impacts that we can. And obviously, this proposal is one that is founded on, uh, a, a great number of reductions that have already occurred, uh, in our rank-and-file local 3 employees, and also the presence of additional cuts that will be necessary. And we are committed, uh, to making sure that we have, uh, our employees trained and vetted and performing efficiently, and are very proud of what they do and how they do it. And, and it is, uh, from that foundation that, that we really must move forward. But it is different than, uh, full collective bargaining, where both parties have to agree. Uh, this is impact bargaining, which is a limited form of the city taking to them the changes we wish to make. We have successfully followed that process, and as you have heard today, as have I, uh, the workforce, uh, may be in a majority opposed to this change, but it still may be something that lies in your purview to move forward if you see, as the management does, uh, that this will lead to efficiencies and the ability for a smaller workforce to accomplish the tasks that are present.
Okay, Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. With that being said, uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sparks and operating engineers, local 3, uh, non-supervisory unit implementing the, the SSSI Phase 2, including new pay ranges and reclassifications.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item 7.1, the MOU. Uh, any further discussion? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna go ahead and, uh, clarify a financial impact and make sure I'm reading this correctly. It says in a spreadsheet reflecting all salary impacts attached. Summary of these impacts show the cost savings of $4,108, and a reclassification cost of $29,000. So, we spend 30, we save 4, and then spend 30.
That's correct. When you look, when we looked at the SSSI as a total, it was the 2.3 versus the 101. In this particular bargaining unit, we are spending more than we saved.
Thank you. Okay, other questions?
So, I'd like to understand the impact bargaining piece just a little bit more, and so, I mean, is that really the impact that, so we've reclassified this position, there may be a salary increase or a salary decrease, and that's the impact? Is that what we're talking about, or is impact defined more broadly than salary?
My understanding is that the city still has the ability to determine what positions it needs to have in order to operate the government of the city. Um, we meet with the union and talk about the impacts of the changes. Um, they don't have to agree. I, I don't want that to sound like we don't care what they think, because, like I said, we have met with them many, many times. But it still falls within the city operations to decide what positions we have. So, developing a maintenance worker 1 through 4 series is within the city's right to do. We are required, however, to do impact bargaining, which is we have to discuss with the union the impact to the employees of making this change. And we have done so.
And the impacts generally described fall into what kinds of categories?
There are three employees whose salaries would be Y-rated, meaning that the job classification that they will fall into is lower than the job classification that they're currently in. What Y-rating means is we will simply freeze their salary. We are not asking to reduce their salary to the maximum of the range, but it's frozen until the range can catch up with them. We, in this process, have made the decision that we need more 3s than we, than we initially came in at and more 4s than we initially came in at. And so, that's where those reclassification costs come in. We have seven, I believe it's seven, maintenance worker 3 positions that did not exist previously that we would be able to promote employees into. So, that's why the costs are more than the savings in this instance.
Does that answer your question? Yes, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion, Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I made that motion knowing full well about the NRS of collective bargaining. I think it falls in that NRS, so that's why I made the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Passes 3 to 2, Ratty and Schmidt against. Okay. Let's move on to 7.2. Any further discussion on 7.2, Chris?
7.2 is the operating engineer supervisory unit. So, we did move some positions from the operating engineers' non-supervisory unit to the supervisory unit. So, you'll see this one also has some additional costs.
Okay. This is a public hearing item, I'm going to open it. Does the public, anyone like to speak to this particular agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public here and bring it back to the council for Questions or a motion?
I make a motion.
Mr. Schmidt.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Sparks and the operating engineers, local 3 supervisory unit implementing SSSI Phase 2, including establishing new pay ranges and reclassifications.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve Agenda Item 7.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4 to 1, Mr. Schmidt against. Okay, thanks, Chris. Yeah, thanks for being here, folks. I know this is not easy. It's not easy for us either. Something's got to change and these are the kind of changes that are very, very difficult to make and have got to be made. Okay, let's move on to 8.1, public hearing, consideration possible approval of a vacation of property on the Nugget Avenue and 15th Street public right-of-ways. Mr. Erickson. Waited all this time?
This whole time.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The item before you today for consideration and possible approval is the proposed abandonment of the parcels as outlined in the staff report and depicted on Exhibits A and B, specifically Parcels 1, 2, and 8, shown on Exhibit A and Parcel 12, shown on Exhibit B. This abandonment is in conformance to the schedule outlined in the memo of understanding signed by the council on December 13th of 2010 between the Nugget and the city, in particular items E and G. That concludes my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Erickson? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public like to speak to this particular agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action. Questions? Mr. Carrigan.
What's the value of this plan? I couldn't find it anywhere.
That's a great question. I don't have that information.
Okay.
Questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson.
I move to approve the vacation of those portions of Nugget Avenue on 15th Street as outlined by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve Agenda Item 8.1 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion?
Just one.
Go ahead.
John, that's right-of-way, is it?
Yeah, it's right-of-way.
That's all it is.
Yeah, and redundant parcels.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in, or please vote.
All in favor.
Passes 3 to 2, Carrigan, Schmidt, no. Okay. Uh, thanks, John.
Thanks.
Comments from the council and city manager. Okay, seeing no further business, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and ask that staff work on, I think we need to refine 5.1 because it does show on up and what is our policy and what does NRS say that we have to do here? And at one time, the city council would receive an actual copy, not a copy, but a listing of the checks that were paid on out so we could review those. That's been like five years since we've received anything like that. I'd like to just go ahead and have that in a workshop item to go discuss what are our purchasing policies? Have the city attorney clarified, is there departments that are outside of our scope and what we can do here and then what is our responsibility for it? I think that the discussion was very healthy today and gives us a chance to dig into that a little bit more.
Anyone else? Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I needed to make an announcement about a committee opportunity that's available to members of our community. There is currently one vacancy on the Sparks Advisory Committee for the disabled for a two-year term. Interested applicants should have a knowledge of the challenges faced by the disabled community. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community services application available from the Sparks City Clerk's Office. You may apply online at our city website, which remains www.citiesparks.us. Simply click on the governing part of the webpage and then click to boards and commissions slash get involved and then click to our handy community service applications. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on April 8th, 2011, at which time it will be forwarded to the mayor for his review and forwarded on to the city council for their approval. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any further business? Seeing no further business, we're adjourned. We'll call the order, the redevelopment agency for Monday, March 28th with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith.
Here.
Chairman Smith, Agency Secretary Patterson here, agency members Ratty, Lawson, Martini, Carrigan, Schmidt, Chief Administrative Officer Carey, Agency Attorney Iding.
Here.
Okay, I'll open up the public comment. I do not have any cards. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Yeah, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the agency. Approval of the agenda? Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, that passes unanimously. Number three, recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular redevelopment agency meeting on February 28th, 2011. Any questions, any comments? Move to approve, Mr. Chairman. We have, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period February 10th, 2011 through March 9th, 2011. Move to approve, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion. And a second. Any further discussion?
Do we need to bring this back to see how we do it?
That's why we waited a minute. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, that passes unanimously. Okay, comments from the agency? Any comments? We are adjourned.